Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Wednesday, March 19, 2025, Special Meeting of the Almane Union High School District Board of Trustees. At this time, I call this meeting to order at 5:01 PM. Dr. Zuniga, if you'll take roll call.
Thank you, Board President. Member Ricardo Padilla.
Here.
Member Quiwen.
Present.
Member Dr. Galvez.
Present.
Aliza. Member Dr. Luis Guzman.
Present.
And member Florentino Breones.
Present.
All present.
Thank you, all members are present. We have the full complement of the Cabinet and Legal Counsel. At this time, Legal Counsel, if you'll read us into closed session.
Mr. President, the items on tonight's agenda at Section A, Subsection 2 are: Subsection A, under Government Code 54957, Public Employee Discipline Dismissal Release, two matters. Subsection B, Government Code, Section 54957.6, Labor Negotiations for EMUEA. Item C, under the same section, negotiations for EMUEA Adult Education. And under Item D, same Government Code section, Labor Negotiations for CSEA Chapter 11. And that concludes, or that is the, those are the items for closed session this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Legal Counsel. Dr. Zuniga, do we have any public comments for any items on closed session tonight?
I don't believe so, no, no public comment.
Okay, seeing that there's no public comments for items in closed session, at this time, the board will recess into closed session. We will return into open session at 6:00 PM or as close to that time as possible.
Welcome. Today is Wednesday, March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Today is the Almonte Union High School District Board of Trustees Special Meeting. This time, Dr. Zuniga, if you'll take roll call.
Yes, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening. Ah, I thought the lion country was here. Good evening, everyone. I need to hear that roar, though, but, though, I'm sure it's coming. We're gonna do roll call here for our board members right now, so we would like to start off with Member Ricardo Padilla.
Here.
Member Quey Nguyen.
Present.
Member Dr. Marita Galavies.
Present.
Member Dr. Luis Guzman.
Present.
Member Franchio Briones.
Present.
Student Board Member Andrea Pablo.
Present.
All present.
Thank you, Dr. Zuniga. All members are present, including our student trustee and a full complement of our cabinet and legal counsel. This time, we're gonna move on to our flag salute. Mr. Cuevas, since you're here tonight, would you do us the honor of leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Right hand over your heart. Ready. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Cuevas. This time, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda? Move to approve the agenda for today, Wednesday, March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. It's been moved by trustee Padilla. Is her second?
I second.
Seconded by trustee Nguyen. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? C nine, the agenda is approved. Moving on to public comments, we have one public comment card that's been submitted by Chelsea Lee, student at Fernando Ledesma High School. Ms. Lee, are you here? Come on up to the microphone. So very quickly, before you begin, I do wanna read this. Members of the public who wish to address the Board of Trustees on any matter within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board of Trustees may do so during the public comment portion of the Board of Trustees' agenda. However, pursuant to provisions of the Brown Act, Government Code, Section five four nine five zero, the Board of Trustees, except under very specific emergency circumstances, will not be able to act on any matter discussed during the public comment portion of the agenda until such matter is properly placed on a future meeting agenda. The Board of Trustees may direct district staff to investigate and/or schedule certain matters for consideration at a future board meeting. The Board of Trustees cannot respond to specific questions from the public. However, we do welcome comments and questions from the public. Ms. Lee, whenever you're ready, you'll have three minutes. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, wonderful members of Almonte High School District. My name is Chelsea Lee, and tonight I want to share my journey at Fernando Ledesma High School. I believe that it's currently shaping not how I, out my, it's shaping how I look at life, and I believe this school is more than just a place of learning. It is a community, and it's where resilience is nurtured, and where struggles are understood, and where growth is encouraged but and celebrated. The teachers and staff here don't just educate, they empower. They see potential in students long before we see it in ourselves. They remind us that their, through their support, that success is not just reserved for the lucky, but it's within anyone's reach, and that, and it's for anyone willing to try and to believe. At Ledesma, I didn't just feel like another student. I felt seen, heard, and valued in a way I never imagined possible. They, the encouragement I found there wasn't just about academics, it was about believing in my own abilities to overcome obstacles, to redefine what success meant for me, and to embrace my own path forward. I can say without hesitation that this school didn't just give me an education, it gave me hope. It reminded me that our path does not define us, but rather the choices we make moving forward do. Fernando Ledesma High School is proof that every student, no matter their struggles, deserves a place where they are not judged by where they've been, but uplifted towards where they can go. go. As I stand here tonight, ready to step into my future, I do so with a heart full of gratitude. This school is teacher, and its community has shaped me in ways I will carry for the rest of my life. So I am proud to be a graduate at Fernando La Desma High School. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. Dr. Zuniga, do we have any further public comments?
No more public comments.
Thank you. This time, we'll move on to communication from our union representatives. Is there a representative from the Almonte Union Educators Association? Okay, I don't see anybody. Is there anybody here representing CSCA Chapter eleven? See nobody. We'll move on. Thank you. Moving on to oral and written communication, Board Superintendent Announcements and Communication. We'll start off with Dr. Zuniga, and then we'll move on to our student trustee.
Yes, thank you, Board President Briones. I just wanted to highlight and congratulate Fernando Arla Desma for their completion of their WASC accreditation. That is the accreditation that every high school in the state of California has to go through to make sure that the school is complying with not only adhering to state standards, adhering to policies that all public schools are expected to have at the high school level, and to ensure that when you receive a high school diploma, that you are accredited and you're able to go on to college and career-ready because of that school that was accredited, including all of our high schools, too. So it was Fernando La Desma's turn to go through that process. Normally, if you get a good grade or a good outcome of that visit, you get six years of just being good, and that's the highest you can get mark, and they'll revisit you again in the mid-year, what you call mid-year review of the third year. So just think about it like someone comes and looks at what you're doing and what you're saying you're doing. It actually is happening on campus, and these are all folks from different schools. They're either administrators or teachers that are visiting the campus to make sure that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing, and that also what we're saying we're doing is happening every day. And Almonte has been through many, many accreditations in the past as well. So just giving you an example there. So I'd like to just express to the board that this afternoon, actually this morning by eleven forty-five a.m., the visiting team of four members closed up their WASC visit, presented some initial outcomes, and I'd like to announce some of the areas of strengths that were highlighted. First of all, strong, experienced leadership. I know Mr. La Desma has been a standing principal there, did a great job in leading his team to prepare for the WASC visit. The alignment of the mission and vision that the school had with the district goes hand in hand, so that was highlighted. Impeccable facilities. They were impressed by Fernando La Desma's facilities and how beautiful it looks. Some lady commented that there was no dust, that she didn't see any dust anywhere, which is a pretty, pretty positive for a continuation of high school. The positive district and school board support, access to technology across all classrooms, community partnerships. We have an alternative lens, which means that we're meeting kids halfway at the campus. If they come in, we have a customized program to meet their needs and get them back onto their comprehensive high schools. Flexibility program options, there's different time slots that kids can come in the afternoon, in the morning to complete their courses. There's also online opportunities also to take their classes and get caught up and go back to their comprehensive high school. We established dual enrollment options for Fernando La Desma's kids like we do at the comprehensive high school. Equity-centered learning, consistent learning objectives, diverse instructional strategies, college and career readiness promotion, data-driven decision, student engagement, social emotional, social emotional learning, and mental health support. They highlighted the wellness center that Fernando La Desma has, just like we do at other, our comprehensive high schools. And really, in a nutshell, caring about your kids, that was one of the things that they highlighted is, there's a caring sense here at La Desma High School. With the positive outcomes, there's also areas of focus that we wanna continue to strive, because we know that we wanna strive for perfection, and this is an opportunity for us to say, how can we improve at one of our high schools? For La Desma, the area of focus was build capacity for leadership opportunities, expand career technical education, course offerings, strengthen professional development opportunities for our staff, focus on math achievement, which obviously we are doing as an entire district, increase graduation rates, which is very important for our students at Fernando La Desma High School to be college and career-ready and to graduate from La Desma. We wanna increase collaboration time for our teachers as well, and then strengthen student engagement and student voice, maintain rigor and inclusivity, and also career, extend career readiness integration, and then student-centered instruction as well. So those are some of the things that we will work with our Fernando La Desma staff and support our school principal in moving forward in their next visit. But again, I expect a six-year accreditation. I think just the initial response from the visiting team, where they were impressed by not only the campus, but also by the strong support that is given by the district as well as the board, to make sure that our La Desma students are treated the same way as students that are in the comprehensive high schools, regardless of where they come from. Wanna make sure that the kids get the same education that they would have received at their comprehensive high school. So that's all I have for today.
Thank you, Dr. Zuniga. One small correction. Principal at La Desma High School is Mr. Artiaga.
Artiaga. Yes, yes, I'm sorry, Artiaga, Artiaga.
I didn't wanna interrupt your train of thought, but I just wanted to make sure that that was on the record.
If you're watching, Mr. Artiaga, I apologize. You are the person who had La Desma High School.
Thank you, Dr. Zuniga.
Thank you for catching that.
We knew what you meant.
Trustee Pablo.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Andrea Pablo, the student board member for the Almonte Union High School District. I don't have much to report out today. I have been able to attend a few, a few games, from the boys' volleyball to track and field events, as well as, as the student advisory council has been working on our district-wide leadership day. So that's something exciting to be looking forward to in the next month, or May, I believe so. Also, happy International Women's History Month to everyone here, and thank you, Mr. Cuevas, for bringing all these people. It's truly amazing to see people my own age. I don't mean any offense to anyone here. It's just that, it's nice to see that, that the school comes together and shows their pride for, for where they come from. So yeah, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Pablo. Moving on to the board, I'll start off with trustee Nguyen. And as a reminder to the board, if we could keep our comments to five minutes.
Okay, I try. Okay, I would like to report it out. You know, on Thursday, March sixth, two thousand and twenty-five, I went to Mountain View School District, Montevista Elementary School, read aloud to first and third grade. Brought me back a happy memory, you know, when my kids were young, and the kids are wonderful. On the same day, I went to a Royal High School visit together with Dr. Luis Guzman, talked to the counselor. They appreciated the board brought the math initiative to the school district to improve the math performance of our student. Dr. Guzman and I observed some students were completely disenfranchised in the math class. We both agree that, you know, small class size alone is not enough. It's also take collaboration with the Almonte City District, School District, to better prepare the student before entering our school. On Monday, March tenth, two thousand and twenty-five, attended student advisory committee. I met, I had a short interview with one of our Los Angeles County Student Advisory Council member, Alejandro Dina, from Mountain View High School District, from Mountain View High School, and asked him how he rated the math program in Parkview, where he come from, from one to ten. He gave a three. And how he, how he rating Mountain View's High School District, you know, math, he gave a four. So it's understandable, because, you know, when I went to California Math Council meeting conference, you know, I met some of those, they collect about thousand students from grade three to, you know, to twelve grade, and if you, if you started bad, it could continue on and on and on until it intervened. So he appreciated the math initiative in our district. The next question is, you know, math is so badly taught to you, so how can you become such a star, academic star in your Mountain View School District? He told me that he joined Harvey Mudd Upward Bound, where his sister joined it, and that's why I had learned, and he want to become AP scholar with distinction, and his dream is to go to UC Berkeley and UCLA, and that's good, that's great. On Monday, on March tenth, the same thing, I met with Dr. Philip Agostino, Superintendent of Rosemead School District, and his assistant superintendent services, education services, Dr. Fang. He tried to showcase me the plan, how to move the district forward, especially in math. I'm glad to see the plan include the Math Academy this summer, either by PCC or Rio Honda College. And we will meet, and I asked him the question, you know, that's a long-term goal. What's the immediate goal to address the shortcomings of those kids that far behind, especially the Latino kid? We don't have, he doesn't have an answer yet, but that will be in the next meeting. On Friday, March seventh, two thousand and twenty-five, I attended the Parent Involvement Academy, attended AI session led by Justin Lim. It's overwhelming attendance, and the state testing, the state testing California assessment of student progress and performance led by Tim Deng. It's amazing. It's also the same day, I met with Almonte City School District Superintendent, Dr. Maribel Garcia, discussing how to prepare the student for math before entering school, our high school. Dr. Garcia invited me to attend the professional development for the math teacher using cognitive guide instruction in math. I also left all the data from NWEA, DNF rate from all the feeder school from Almonte City School District, and, you know, and we'll discuss again next week how to service those underperformed students from elementary, elementary school district. It's very important, because we are not a unified school district. That's the need to collaborate with the feeder school district is paramount important. So on Tuesday, March eleventh, I attended Super PAC meeting, and attended Math Academy presentation from Rio Honda, and I brought school board member from Rosemead School District to connect them with Ms. Yolanda Emerson, Dina Prior Honda Honda, so they can see how it works. And, you know, they learn a lot, and they come back to the, to their board, and they spread, you know, the message, and guess what? They wanna have summer school either by Rio Honda or by Pasadena City College. So on Saturday, you know, I went to groundbreaking Samora Park of Almonte. It's twelve years in the making with Assemblyman Mike Fong and other dignitary. Congratulations to Maria Jesse Ancona and city council member for bringing the park to the Almonte resident. They deserve it. On Sunday, March sixteenth, I attended the WASC welcoming reception with President Briones, Dr. Marita Galavies, and Mr. Ricardo Padilla. I get comment about Fernando La Desma. I rate it highly, because it's the only continuing high school that received a distinguished award, the best continuing high school two years ago. And under the leadership of Freddie Artiaga and Bernie Artiaga, they not only make the student feel belonging like one of the student from Fernando La Desma comment, public comment, they also make it start welcoming, too. So that's one of the best school that happened in our school district. And, you know, a day ago, I just went to, with President Briones, go to Almonte High School side visit with the Dr. Zuniga, and observing a lot of good thing going on. And, you know, they have transcript evaluation sessions, so they can see how kids moving along their four-year plans, either are they able to graduate with the A to G or not, so you know, got alternative, and that's an excellent session.
Mr. Nguyen, if you could wrap up your comments.
Just one more second, one, one, one more minute. And yesterday, we, we went with President Briones with Almonte High School District, you know, you know, and it, it, it's a wonderful thing that happened, and that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Padilla?
Yes, first of all, I'd like to thank Board Member Quey Nguyen. Thank you so much for your hard work. I know that we have five minutes to speak, but sometimes some board members do, you know, a lot more work. So if you need more than five minutes, I mean, that's just what it is. But thank you for the work that you do. I'd like to start off by thanking the Super PAC. The Super PAC is the Superintendent Parent Advisory Committee, and I was able to attend, and I love it, I love that committee, because that's a place where parents have a voice. In the last meeting, we were talking about, briefly about the immigration issue that continues to affect our community, and made sure that all of our members of our, our Super PAC are aware that on our website, you can get a family plan. You can prepare everything for your family plan in the event that parents are deported or anything happens. There's a full plan that you can copy off of there, and the parents were aware of it, and they're able to share it with other parents. We also talked about the cellphone policy. I know that there's a law that wants to restrict the use of cellphones on campus to lessen the interruptions for students, so that we can have better achievement and better learning, and we're trying to get input from our students, from our parents, and from the staff. We also reviewed, we also talked about a ribbon-cutting that we're gonna be having. We have our Family and Community Engagement Center that is gonna be next to South Almonte High School, but that's gonna be the hub for all of our parents to, to have their meetings. So it gives me great pride to know that they're gonna have a facility. So great job, Dr. Zuniga, for running Super PAC and making sure that our parents have a voice. As I've always said, the number one client is our students and our parents. Without them, we don't have jobs, okay? You guys are the number one client, and so are your parents, and don't ever forget that. Second, big kudos to El Monte High School for Open House. I truly enjoyed going to your Open House. Mr. Cuevas, you always razzle-dazzle us. I love it. Your staff was so friendly, so engaging, and your students are amazing. I tell you, on that night, I don't, it was the same night as the Super PAC, and so I had to leave, but on that night, I never eat dinner, because I always enjoy all the club, all the clubs, and supporting you and all the foods. I had everything. I had esquite, I had fresas con crema, masubi, I had matcha, matcha strawberry, hot dogs, quesadillas. I had de todo, de todo con mi. So thank you to all the clubs. Hopefully, you guys made a lot of money to support your, your club's efforts. Also, shout out to Fernando Arla Desma High School also for your Open House. Thank you for being so friendly, Mr. Freddie Artiaga, your entire staff, and for feeding everybody who comes to your Open House. We were able to have some delicious hamburgers that Mr. Bernie Artiaga, one of the counselors there cooked, one of the best hamburgers I've ever had. I don't know how he does it, but they've mastered it. Very moist, very tasty, very nice, and always, I feel like a million dollars when I go there in the treatment that I get. Their customer service is superb. Also, a big shout out to Dr. Rivas, Dr. Lynn, and Mrs. Torres, because they, too, were there at Fernando La Desma. They, too, were there for the Open House. They were at El Monte High School. They were at the WASC. We, kudos again to Fernando Arla Desma. They're going through the, the WASC process. The WASC is the Western Association of Schools and Colleges. This is a committee that tells you that your diploma is valid, and they're coming in right now, and I agree with Dr. Zuniga that they will be having a six-year accreditation. Thank you to Dr. Rivas, Dr. Lynn, and also to Mrs. Torres. We were there on Sunday. They were there on Sunday with this group, and I know that we impressed them, and I wanna thank you for that publicly, Assistant Superintendents. What else did I do? Let me see. I wanna give a great shout out on attendance. You know, Mr. Padilla does child welfare in attendance, and so I wanna give a big shout out to first place, Rosemead High School with ninety-five point forty-four. Big shout out to a Royal High School with ninety-five point twelve percent. Third place, El Monte High School, ninety-four point four-three percent. Yes, yes, yes. South El Monte High School with ninety-three point six-five percent, fourth place, and then ninety-two point four percent, Mountain View for fifth place. As you know, there is a strong correlation between attendance and achievement. Schools that have higher attendance do better in school. Schools that have lower attendance do not as well. That's just common sense. They do studies on these. I've been doing it for thirty-two years. It works. Show up to school every day and on time, and you'll get a lot of prizes, and you'll get a lot of knowledge. When it comes to attendance, it's very important that students are aware that, I'm gonna tell you how much money your school lost, they didn't get just in this last month. So the school that lost the most money, that they didn't get the money to buy things at their school was Mountain View High School. Just this last month, they lost two hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one dollars. And the second highest was a Royal. They lost one hundred and ninety-seven thousand.
Mr. Padilla, if you could just take one more minute.
I'm almost done. And third place, we have a hundred and nine, a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars that they lost. In fourth place, one hundred and seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and four dollars. And then in fifth place, we have one hundred and sixty-one dollars, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars by, who was this? Rosemead High School lost the least amount of money. That's easy money. All you guys have to do is show up to school, and your school will get the money. Sometimes people, when I talk about that, they're like, Mr. Padilla, you just care about the money. Yes, I care about the money, because the money is for who? For students. If you don't come in, then we don't get all those dollars to buy things and programs for you. That's something that I do care about a lot. But if you're sick, yes, you have to stay home. Nobody wants to be sick, but if you're sick, I get it. But there's some times where kids are not sick, and that's some of the dollars that we're losing. So I want you guys to get it, and we'll give you prizes, and we'll bring in and out, and we'll give jackets and gifts, because we want your school to get that money to buy more program for your students. That is it for today. Mr. Briones. Oh, one last thing.
Quickly, please.
Kudos to Mr. Ramon Lopez from South El Monte High School. I really enjoy the mentoring program that you're starting to mentor freshman students and placing them with upperclassmen. That's very important, because when you come to high school and you're a freshman, you're lost. I remember when I was a freshman, I was lost. So when I hear that they're gonna pair you up with like a junior and a senior that kinda has the ropes a little more. kind of has the ropes a little more, that's a win-win for both sides.
Thank you. Trustee, Dr. Galvez.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being with us tonight. This is an amazing turnout. I, we did a lot because it's been a busy month. March is kind of like open house month. So I'll start off kind of with chronological order in the way we attended everything. So I went to El Monte High School's open house. It was my first time on the campus. I'd been to maybe the football field a few times when I was a student, but some of the highlights that I was really impressed by, one, the choir was phenomenal. So it was really beautiful to see the students participate in that. The cheerleaders were really excited to be out there. And then as I walked the classroom, I was there for the full two hours. I got to see every single classroom. That was really important to me as it was my first visit there. And some of the things that really stood out to me was in the English classroom, the English teachers are using rubrics that to align to the SBAK test. So they're really trying to prepare their students for SBAK testing, which is great, you know, preparation and then students won't have as much probably testing anxiety. So I did love seeing that at El Monte High School. I also had the chance to go into like the online learning classroom and those teachers were really informative, very welcoming. And I was able to speak to, I think she's in the back, one of the teachers about the cellphone like module that they're using to put the cellphones away. So I kind of asked her how successful it was going and she said to me that she has seen a little bit of a decrease in students using their phones. They're becoming less hesitant about keeping their phones and putting them in there. So it was really nice to be able to connect with the teachers, get to know people. And so I had a really good time visiting El Monte High School. We also had open, we also attended open house at Fernando Ladesma. That was a great experience because when you walk into all the classrooms, there's a common theme on the walls. So the administrator kind of sets the tone where they want to see like four different things on the walls and you can see them and each teacher puts their unique spin on it. So I thought that was really cool. There's like a social emotional wall, there's a data wall, there is a wall where teachers kind of get to honor the history of the school and their experience there because a lot of the educators there have been there for long periods of time. So that created like a very welcoming environment and I think that's excellent that our schools are out there creating welcoming environments when you're coming into the classroom. So I was super impressed by both schools' open houses and I got to see some really great things. I did also attend the WASC kickoff event. That was neat. The board was there, executive cabinet was there and it really felt like we showed up as a team to send WASC off in their, or send Fernando Ladesma off in their WASC journey. So kudos to them for going through that process. And then at our last board meeting, Mr. Hoffman and Ms. Heredia from the El Monte Historical Society came to talk to us about an event they were hosting this past Sunday and I was able to stop by and attend that event. That's a really great museum that we have here in town. If you haven't been yet, I suggest you go check it out. And then finally, last night, Gilce Narros, our congressman, hosted an event here and so I just came to kind of show support that, you know, as school board members, we're also involved in what's happening in our state and that's it.
Thank you, Dr. Galvez. Trustee, Dr. Guzman.
Yeah, so I'll make it brief because I know we have all the students waiting and parents. So I wanted to start with the site visit that I went with Mr. Qui to Arroyo High School. We got to see everything that they're, they're doing, including ethnic studies, how they're really integrating ethnic studies into all the different subjects they're teaching. We got to see some of the renovation that's going on. I also got to visit a couple of days ago with Mr. Qui again, South El Monte High School. I was able to stay for a little over an hour, about an hour and a half to see the, see the modernization of the high school. It was really great to see all the new buildings and just all the great instruction that's going on. We got to see along with Dr. Zuniga, the special day class for students with special needs and just the new facility. So it was really cool to see that. And the last thing I want to share is that I also got to attend the El Monte High School open house. And for me, I hadn't been on the campus probably in about two years. That's my alma mater. I won't say what class I graduated from, but El Monte High School definitely has a special place in my heart. So it was really cool to go back to see all the classroom and everything that the teachers are doing, the students, the choir is always amazing. So you know, it was really special and I think that might've been it for, for me. So I see it to President Brionas. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Guzman. For me, some of my colleagues have already shared the events that they, that I also attended. So I want to say thank you for being there, including the Fernando Ladesma open house and then thank you for attending El Monte High School's open house. I wasn't able to attend that evening as well as the El Monte Historical Society visit. Thank you for being there. Yes, it's a wonderful museum. Quick plug for them, it's a great place. El Monte High School, you're right down the street from them. Please take a moment to go visit the museum whenever you have an opportunity. I did want to share a couple of things in more detail. One, Mr. Nguyen already mentioned the El Monte High School site visit. I want to say thank you to Mr. Cuevas for leading that visit. We were in several classrooms and let me tell you, students were engaged. They were actively listening, actively participating. It was a great, a great visit there, El Monte High School. Students were doing really amazing work. Thank you to the faculty for your support. We were able to see the students getting the information from the career guidance coordinator as well as their counselors on their transcripts and their A through G requirements. And so that, that was a really great visit. For me, this past week, I participated in the California School Board Association Legislative Action Week. I had the opportunity to meet with Assemblymember Mike Fong and Assemblymember Lisa Keldron representing Districts 49 and 56 respectively. As a trustee with my colleagues from across the, the area here in the San Gabriel Valley, we advocated on several budget priorities, including protecting Proposition 98, which provides school funding. We asked the legislature to reject the $1.6 billion withholding proposal that the governor has proposed and to fully fund our COLA. And more importantly, to help protect our local educational agency solvency's after the implementation of AB 218 back in 2019. We also asked the legislators to support specific bills, including AB 1021 and AB 1381, which are about education and workforce, workforce housing, as well as AB 1111, which extends the zero emission school bus purchasing mandate from 2035 to 2045. Here, we've had the, the good fortune to receive a CARB grant to electrify our bus fleet, but we still keep a couple or at least one CNG bus on our fleet for longer trips. School districts that are in more rural areas are finding it difficult to, to meet that, that target deadline of 2035 because either the technology doesn't exist for batteries or perhaps the infrastructure isn't in place. So we were advocating for an extension by 10 years of that mandate. Additionally, we asked the legislators to support AB 1224, which would allow substitute teachers to take on long-term assignments, longer than 30 days, up to 60 days, as well as we asked them to oppose SB 494 by Senator Cortezing, which would usurp local control over staff disciplinary procedures from school districts. This week, I had the opportunity to send, attend South El Monte High School's FPLA meeting with their students. I want to say thank you to Ms. Lee and Mrs. Casillas, as well as the FPLA leadership for inviting me to speak to them. This is the third year that I've been able to speak to the students there. Trustee Galvez mentioned yesterday's Town Hall with Congressman Sisnetos here in our boardroom. Want to say thank you to our staff for facilitating that meeting. And of course, thank you to Congressman Sisneros for choosing to host this first Town Hall in the 31st Congressional District here in our own boardroom. And then the last thing I wanted to share, and if you'll indulge me, let me go over my five minutes by a minute or two. I did receive our, our monthly newsletter from the California School Boards Association called California School News and it was something that caught my attention in their governance corner. And I'm going to read it so that I can share it with my colleagues. So it says, "Board Member Participation in LCAP and Community Meetings. California School Board Members Play Vital Role in Ensuring Student Success Through Decisions Made at the Diaz and by Actively Engaging with Their Communities. One Key Way to Stay Connected to Community Needs is by Participating in Local Control and Accountability Plan or LCAP, Information Gathering Sessions and Other Public Meetings Where School Issues Are Discussed. However, Board Members Must Ensure Their Participation Is Appropriate, Constructive, and Beneficial to the Local Educational Agency and the Public." Understanding the Board Member Role. While Board Member Presence at LCAP and Community Meetings is Valuable for Transparency and Trust Building, Participation Should Enhance Rather Than Dominate Discussions. Board Members Should Champion the Participation of Voters, Taxpayers, Parents, and the Community by Promoting These Events Through Public Outreach, Social Media, and Partnerships. However, to Maintain the Integrity of These Meetings, Board Members Should Adhere to Five Key Best Practices. Number One, Listen More Than You Speak. Prioritize Understanding Community Perspectives. Number Two, Avoid Dominating Discussions. Encourage Input From Diverse Voices. Number Three, Refrain From Making Commitments. Policy Decisions Should Be Made Collectively At Board Meetings. Excuse me, my screen just went off. There we go. Number Four, Ask Thoughtful Questions. Facilitate Discussions That Elicit Meaningful Insights. And Number Five, Demonstrate Empathy. Recognize and Validate the Experiences of Stakeholders. Key Questions for Board Members to Consider. To Ensure Their Participation Aligns With District Goals and Respect Stakeholder Input, Board Members Should Reflect on the Following. Number One, How Should I Prepare for LCAP and Community Meetings to Contribute Meaningfully While Respecting Others' Input? Number Two, What District Priorities Should I Be Familiar With to Represent the Board's Vision? Number Three, How Can I Encourage Open Dialogue Without Overshadowing Parent, Student, and Community Voices? Number Four, How Should I Use Insights Gathered From These Sessions to Inform Governance Decisions? And Lastly, What Resources or Training Can Help Me Better Understand the LCAP Process? Seeing Trustees at Info Gathering Sessions Shows the Community, Community That the Board is Interested and Engaged. Striking the Right Balance Between Governance and Participation Allows Board Members to Build Trust and Ensure Stakeholder Voices Help Shape District Priorities. And that really stood out to me because all of us here attend community meetings, whether they're LCAP input sessions or other meetings like the Superintendent's Parent Advisory Committee, Open House, PTSA, among many others. And I think it's important for us as trustees to understand that our presence at those meetings should not inhibit somebody else's participation. We shouldn't be dominating conversations. We should allow a natural, organic process to occur when we ask for input or feedback from our community members. So it is important for us to attend these meetings, but it's also important for us to understand the very unique role that we play as trustees. So I just wanted to share that with everybody. So thank you for indulging me on this evening at this time. That concludes my report and we will move on to information presentation, school site instructional report, and student representative update. Dr. Zuniga, if you want to introduce our guest tonight.
Yes, thank you, Board President Brionas. And then again, another opportunity for us to celebrate the success of the progress of our schools. And tonight, as we have done throughout the school year, we feature a high school program. So this is your instructional program for tonight, which is El Monte High School. And I could see that we have students, we have parents, we have community members, we have amazing teachers in the class, in, in the facility and also some support staff members too. So this is definitely a lion pride that comes together tonight. I want to welcome our principal, Mr. Eddie Cuevas. Proud principal, I know that for a fact, and also a graduate of El Monte High School and really proud of him for the work that he's done at El Monte High School over his tenure there. Believe it's year five now, Mr. Cuevas, under his leadership there at El Monte High School. So I'm going to hand it to you now and I know you'll be presenting some other guests that we'll be presenting this evening. So welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Zuniga. Good evening, Board President Brionas, Board Members, Dr. Zuniga, and District Leaders and esteemed guest. My name is Eddie Cuevas and yes, you know, I always start off with, it is my privilege and it is my honor to be a graduate and also to be the principal of El Monte High School. As an alumnus, I always carry with me the deep-rooted pride and tradition that our school holds. And as a principal, I am committed to upholding our excellence and providing and fostering new opportunities for our students. Tonight, I'm excited to share the incredible work that is happening at El Monte High School. I want to introduce to you our lion family. First, I'd like to start off by introducing your, introducing us to our students. If I can have our students stand up, please. Thank you, students. Second, I'd like to introduce our parents. Nuestros padres, por favor, si se pueden levantar, gracias. Next, I'd like to introduce our staff. Nuestros maestros. If you guys can stand up. Staff. Next, I'd like to introduce our site director, Daisy Arias, EMUEA. Next, I'd like to introduce our CSCA site rep, Ms. Jessica Lopez. Our site administration, Mr. Kovey. Ms. Palmer. Ms. Palmer. Ms. McClardy. Also with us tonight is our E.L. Tosa, who will be presenting, Ms. Nari Cho Burnthal. And lastly, our instructional coach, Mr. Sean Maher. Today's presentation will consist of two pieces, the student engagement part and also the instructional presentation. The student engagement part, portion of the presentation will focus on El Monte High School and how we've helped our students find their interest or what we call find their roar. The second piece is going to be the piece that's going to include the themes and the best practices that we began back in 2018 and it was reinforced by our 2024 WASC visit. These practices are centered on collaboration, collective efficacy, instructional rounds, academic discussions, and making data-informed decisions while focusing on student and staff wellbeing. Lastly, we will be presenting on how we support our English language learners at El Monte High School. Thank you for your time and commitment to education and continued support of El Monte High School. We look forward to sharing more about our journey and achievements throughout this evening. But with that, I'm going to hand it off to our emcees, Hayden Nguyen and Owen Alatorre.
Good evening, Board President Brionas, Board Members, Dr. Zuniga, and Cabinet. My name's Hayden Nguyen and I'm currently a junior at El Monte High School.
My name is Owen Alatorre and I am a senior and we are thrilled to welcome you to El Monte High School where our goal is for every student to find their roar. This year, we've had an incredible experiences like our annual blue and white rally where we started our school year off with a roar. And who could forget our themed football games from showing our spirit with USA to standing together in our pinkout and constructing a win at the Griffin Bowl against our rivals, South El Monte. We let our roar be heard.
Considering how much time we spend here, El Monte High School truly is our second home. Here at El Monte, we're not only supported academically, but on a personal level. We've celebrated culture through our quinceañera fashion show where students got to show off their culture and their gorgeous dresses and honored traditions with our Day of the Dead altar, recognized our peers with the Pride of the Pack Award, and supported students through wellness and attendance activities.
Even during finals week, our ASB gave out warm hot chocolate, ensuring everyone felt supported as they preserved through final exams. So far, this year, we experienced an incredible adventure together where we've grown stronger and learned to push beyond our limits. This year isn't over, isn't quite over yet and we look forward in continuing our adventure at El Monte High School.
But don't just take our word for it. Tonight, there are lions here to tell you how they found their roar at EMHS.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Destiny Nora and I am a senior at El Monte High School. When I first came to El Monte High School, I was pretty quiet and reserved. It wasn't until my sophomore year that I learned what it meant to find my roar. The first club I joined was very personal to me. It was the Lions of Faith Club. There, I found a welcoming environment to share my faith as well as spread good works around school. Inspired by this, I ventured into other clubs. I had enjoyed many activities my freshman year, like the blue and white rally and homecoming, but I wanted a way to contribute my own ideas. That's when I found ASB. I began as an ASB member and I now serve as ASB president. Likewise, I had the opportunity to join other clubs such as Laurel's, a young women's organization dedicated to community service, National Honor Society, CSF, and more. In addition, I have taken advantage of the many classes offered to us. I've gained college credit through dual enrollment and AP classes. I've gained skills in computer science and even practiced college readiness in Avid. Now I can probably say that I've found my roar. I utilize my skills and work through my weaknesses. I try new things and gain new skills. El Monte High School has something for everyone and if not, the students do have the ability to implement their own ideas. Everyone at EMHS is dedicated to helping the students achieve success and find their own roar. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, board members. Hello, I'm Iladio Sparza. I'm a student athlete at Almani High School. When I first went into high school, I didn't know what I wanted to do or who I was. I decided to join sports like wrestling, cross-country, and track and field. Wrestling had taught me discipline and mental toughness. Every match showed me that there was always more work to do. Cross-country taught me endurance, not just in running, but in life, reminding me to keep pushing through the pain even when the finish line is far away. Track and field gave me focus and the thrill of personal achievement. Through these sports, I found my roar, the confidence to face challenges, the strength to lift others up, and the courage to never quit. I've met so many amazing people from just getting out of my comfort zone. But beyond sports, joining clubs like ASB helped me find a new way in meeting other athletes and students. Almani High School is everyone's chance to find their roar, so join a team or club, go outside your comfort zone. Don't forget to be yourself. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Dayaneli Cobeambaca, and I am a senior at Almani High School. It has been through the extracurriculars at my school that I have become the active student I am today. Early in my high school career, I was intimidated by the thought of being involved in my school. As now leader of two major clubs, I recognize that not only is it a great opportunity to connect with other students, but also learn how to be a more confident person overall. I thank advisors like Vanessa Rodriguez and Sarah Norton, who have helped me throughout my leadership journey, and also appreciate administrators like Sarah McClarty, who introduced me to the California Boys and Girls State Program, and Tony Garcia, who, when I feared to step out of my comfort zone, taught me to be brave and believe in myself. Going forward, I hope that all students in our district continue to experience the student-friendly environment where I have thrived and enable students to speak up for themselves in order to pursue their dreams. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Oliver Garcia, and I'm a junior at Almani High School. I'm a Mexican-American who grew most of its life in Mexico and still find its roar at Almani High School. Today, I want to share how I found my roar at Almani High School. At Almani High School, every student, teachers, and staff finds something that makes them feel like home. It's more than just a school, it's a community for me. I found my roar through activities and experiences that shaped me into the person that I am today. Through LEOS, I learned the power of giving back, and however, the smallest acts of kindness can make a difference in the community. Track and field taught me that improvement is always possible if I push myself beyond my limits. Cross-country showed me that my team is my family, we support each other no matter what. Choir reminded me that there's always something new to learn, and if I step out of my comfort zone. And finally, prep gave me a safe place in which I can truly be myself, surrounded by people that accept me and encourage me to do my best. All these activities and experiences come together to be what it means to be a Lion at Almani High School. It is more than just a place where we learn, it is a place where we grow and support each other. I am proud to be a part of this community and even proud to call myself a Lion at Almani High School. Thank you.
Good evening, board members and district administrators. My name is Kevin Nguyen, and like many others here, I had very little idea of what my high school experience was going to entail when I took my first steps onto campus. I entered freshman year as a lost middle school student who had their eighth grade year taken away and their school forever closed. However, I am proud to say that at Almani High School, I have found my roar. Although I was excluded, I took my first steps in getting involved by joining band and cross. Through these two activities, I met people who would later become some of my closest friends and colleagues. I developed strong leadership, organizational, and communication skills that I would soon carry with me to other organizations and activities here on campus. After developing a strong foundation in these two activities, I decided to apply for our prestigious LEOS Community Service Club, and to my surprise, I accepted. At LEOS, I was able to further develop the foundational skills I initially developed, while also beginning to truly and extensively get involved in my community. Now, as a senior who is head drum major in ASB, N H S, and various other organizations, I can definitely say that I am proud of every achievement and obstacle I have faced here at Lion Country. Because of the support and encouragement of all my peers, teachers, advisors such as Mr. Dujay, and administrators such as Mr. Cuevas and Ms. McClarty, I can say that I could not ask for a better high school experience. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Kevin. Next, I'd like to introduce our very own Almani High School students. Earlier this year, for our incoming eighth graders, we had hosted a fashion show. We thought it was such a good representation of what goes on in Lion Country that we thought we'd bring the show to you guys too.
And that is how Lions find their roar. If we can please give another round of applause to all of our students, please. Almani High School is a fantastic place. It's an amazing place that provides our students with all the opportunities for them to find their inner selves and to find their roar. So thank you all for all the support that you provide at Almani High School. That concludes our student engagement portion of today's report. We're going to be moving on to the next portion of it, which is the instructional piece. Almani High School, as I mentioned earlier in my introduction, has been working on several best practices since 2018 and reinforced by our 2024 WASC visit. And one of those things that we have been focusing on at Almani High School, as a result of having a good segment of our students, anywhere between 20% to 25% of our students being English language learners, we have focused for several years on language acquisition as a way to improve student outcomes. Sorry, who has a clicker? As a result of that, thank you, as a result of that, students' performance over the years, going back to 2018, we've seen an improvement in our S P A C scores in the amount of 16%, and also in math, in the amount, thank you so much. And in math, we have seen an increase in 9% over the years. If you would like more precise data, I can certainly provide that information to Dr. Zuniga and also Dr. Rivas, who can provide it to you all in the Friday memo. But again, we wanted to simplify it and let you know that we have made improvement over the years in our S P A C ELA and also S P A C math scores. With that, I actually want to hand this over to our Assistant Principal of Instruction, Mr. Brian Kovey.
Good evening, board members and cabinet, and everybody for coming out. This is a great turnout, so we appreciate seeing everybody here. My name is Brian Kovey. I am the Assistant Principal in the Instruction Office at Almonte High School. So I'm going to go over some of the things that we've been working on and get us started on the instruction report. So first of all, I want to highlight our, we, at Almani High School, the tradition for a number of years has been to select a particular theme for staff collaboration for the year. And for this year, our theme is mindset for learning, and we've embraced the acronym that's on the screen, GROWTH. So I'll go through those really quickly. Get ready to learn, this is when we're working with our staff collectively as our community. We want to be ready, get ready to learn, want to review what we know, keep an open mind, open our mind for learning, and also take a posture of wondering, wonder and ask. As we get started on our presentation tonight, we're going to use an instructional strategy that we center in our classrooms with our students to lead our lessons, and also that we are in the habit of using in our professional learning opportunities with our staff to guide our learning. And we frame the lesson at the beginning, from the outset, to review with our students and with our staff, our objectives, our learning objectives, or what we refer to as content objectives, and our language objectives. So I'm going to ask for a little bit of participation here really quickly. If Board President Breones, if you could help me out by reading nice and loudly the content objective for this evening's presentation.
Absolutely, Mr. Kovey. So the content objective is, by the end of this presentation, we will connect ways in which Almani High School continues to work collaboratively to develop data-informed, student-centered instructional practices.
Thank you. And Dr. Guzman, can I ask you to help us out by reading the language objective?
Absolutely. Language objective, we will discuss in small groups, one area in which the progression of instructional practices at Almani High School continues.
Great. So by the end of this presentation, our goal is to be able to make connections and also be able to discuss in small groups what those connections are. One of our areas that we have focused on for a number of years at Almani High School, and we continue to do that this year, is our focus on collaboration and collective efficacy. So over the past several years, we've had, as I mentioned, we have staff themes for our collaboration every year, including themes such as get off your islands and build a boat. We have emphasized supporting our teachers working together to share best practices and to feel a joint sense of responsibility and ownership for students. and to feel a joint sense of responsibility and ownership for student learning and success at Almonte High School. We are continuing to do that. We are continuing to work on developing our collective capacity to to support our students and support student achievement by focusing on our PLE, really refining our PLC process, the professional learning communities that exist within our course-like teams, by focusing on the four PLC questions that guide our collaboration. What is it, number one, what is it that we want our students to know and be able to do? How do we know that our students are learning? What do we do when our students are struggling and they're not learning the material or the concepts that we're teaching? And then what do we do when our students are learning maybe more quickly and we need to support them and provide them with extensions or greater learning opportunities? We believe at Almonte High School that our collaborative efforts are essential, are the essential component to increasing our student achievement. And that's, the research and data shows that over and over again, so we focus on that. We believe that teacher clarity through carefully constructed content objectives and language objectives are an essential instructional move that supports our student academic achievement and growth. So we really try to focus on that as we have been doing that across the district as well this year. An important part of our working together, our collaborating at our school site with our staff has to do with our, involves our classroom walkthroughs and our instructional rounds. So we have continued to highlight and to provide opportunities for teacher-to-teacher observation. So we support our teachers in observing other classrooms, departmental and cross-curricular visits, and really foster an open-door atmosphere that really will create opportunities for peer feedback and the exchange of ideas. By the end of this school year, we will have each member of our instructional leadership team will have participated in our district instructional walkthroughs. We will have on our site, all of our classrooms will have been visited in one form or another, but either through our district instructional walkthroughs or our site-level instructional rounds. So we're really just trying to create an atmosphere that's really open, where we can visit each other, learn from each other, really provide, we really want to, really been focusing on our real bright spots as were mentioned earlier by board members that have come to the school. Our goal is to continue building teacher efficacy through these instructional rounds and walkthroughs. And that's a major focus for us. All right. And I'm going to hand it over to our instructional coach, Sean Maher.
Good evening. I'm Sean Maher. I'm the instructional coach at Almonte High School. I've been the instructional coach for about five or six years. I've been at the school, however, for, this is my 27th year. I started as an English teacher and I was in the classroom for about 20 years before taking on a couple of different roles since that time. Mr. Cuevas mentioned, and Mr. Covey also reiterated the fact that since 2018, we have not really changed, but instead continued the program that our WASC group from 2018, the directives that they gave us, to really work on working together, working with academic language, using data. And I think that our program for the last six years has been successful as a result. And we had a very nice WASC visit as a result of that recently. Part of what we are continuing with this year relates to focusing on academic discussions. We know that if we want students to just hear what we are saying, then we just talk at them. If we want them to learn what we are hoping that they will learn, they need to talk to each other. And we have really, really tried to emphasize having everything from very small group to pair shares, to small group, to classroom discussions and debates in the classroom, so that the work of learning is shifted from the teacher trying to get students to understand or learn whatever it is that their content area is, but instead have students own it for themselves, share it with others, and then be able to have a much better access to whatever the skill is, the content is, the knowledge that they really will need to be critical thinkers, readers, speakers in the future. And so we have really continued this academic discussion. It's a big emphasis that we've been looking at for the past six years plus. But this past year, we've really done much more in terms of speaking with PD in the fall, where we had our teachers go through a PD related to speaking. And we have been trying to calibrate what is acceptable speaking, what are different ways that we can get students to share the burden of learning by sharing what they know with each other and with the teachers. If you look at our LPAC data from the past several years, and this includes COVID years in there, but you'll see from 2020 to 2024, we've increased quite a bit on the speaking section of our LPAC. This is just representational data to indicate that hopefully things are working in terms of our English language learners. And if it's working with our English language learners, it should be working with all of our learners. We do talk about often that we are concerned with our English language learners, but 100% of our students are academic language learners. Even if they are English-only students, they are academic language learners. They need to learn the language of academics. And if they can unlock that, even as an English-only student, they will have better access to whatever the content or the skill is that they are working in. Well, there we go. We have continued just along the lines of continuation. We have continued working with our designated ELD, our integrated ELD. In particular, we have had model lessons created by our EL Tosa, Ms. Bernthal, who's here tonight, called What Do You Think?, which are model lessons that incorporate all four areas of language, in particular, the speaking and the writing, so that students are seeing what a good lesson should incorporate. The teachers are seeing what a good lesson should incorporate. These are hopefully high-interest topics for students that they would naturally be engaging with, sometimes on their own outside of the classroom setting. But then they are also engaging with some of these topics in the classroom, and they're going through a whole process so that they can get up to speed on how to critically think about a topic, how to share information about a topic, and how to understand that. In addition, the district has been really focusing this year on content and language objectives as our evidence-based practice number one. We have worked extensively on the content and language objectives for the past 10 years, possibly longer. This year in particular, we have been doing walkthroughs, looking at the various ways that, around the district, looking at various ways that content and language objectives are delivered. We continue to know that that is the nugget of the lesson. When Mr. Covey was talking about framing the lesson, we've been using this framing the lesson from this fundamental five that we've been talking about for several years at our site, for people who are familiar with it. But framing the lesson is the main takeaway that people should have. And we've incorporated the frame of the lesson with our PSYOP strategy of content and language objectives. And we have continued to refine over and over again, both at the district, but also at Almonte High School. So when we have been doing walkthroughs, on the left side, you'll see what the district evidence-based practice criteria are. And those are sometimes very simple so that we can make sure that we actually see our content and language objectives clearly defined. Are they accessible to students? Are they in language that they'll understand? But in addition to that, we at Almonte High School have been trying to step them up somewhat by having SMART and, in particular, SMART E content and language objectives. And so we have a checklist where, similar to a SMART goal, we have, we're trying to make sure that they're specific, that they are measurable, attainable, relevant, timely, and every student, so our special populations, whether it's a language learner or a student who learns differently than others, or a student who is very elevated in their learning, can all have access to whatever the content and then the language objective is as well. We also have coupled that with using the depth of knowledge chart and that language so that as much as possible, we are trying to stay in DOK three or four. Because if students are being required to talk about a topic, to write about a topic, to understand a topic at a higher level, they will have a better chance of being successful in really owning that information. And so as much as possible, we try to make sure that we are thinking always about DOK level three and four. If you notice, I'm actually going to skip backwards really quickly. In our content and language objectives, we try to make sure that we incorporate as much as possible all of those SMART E criteria. And so by the end of this presentation is the timely aspect. We will connect, that's at the DOK level, what is going to be expected. The very specifics are related to the working collaboratively to develop informed, student-centered instructional practices. That's relevant to what our purpose is for us here tonight. And we want to make sure that in our language objective, we are going to ask people to actually discuss how much one area of what's been discussed tonight in the presentation. And so by having very clear criteria for our students, by having very clear criteria when we do a PD, we hope that we are able to make it easier for students, for staff, to understand exactly what's expected of them, so that we can make the road for that much easier. We continue to work with data. If you were to ask, we've used a data protocol at our site for quite some time. But if you were to ask people until recently, this year, last year, they might say, our data protocol, our data protocol? This year, I would be pretty certain that if I were to ask people, what's our data protocol? Everybody on our staff would know what I'm talking about. Because we are consistently using a data protocol so that we can look at what the facts are, so that we can make some, ask some questions about what those facts are. We can think about the implications of those facts and then determine what our next step should be. And by going through this protocol, it's very simple. It's not rocket science, and everybody kind of should be using something like that. By doing that, we're hoping that from the school level down to the individual course level, we are getting people looking at data, thinking about the data, and then taking action on the data that will be appropriate for their students. So we've had multiple uses of that this year. In addition, I created a data dashboard so that we can look at data from Synergy in a slightly different way. And it sometimes will reveal information that might be surprising or interesting or make us be curious about what it is that we can do with our certain classes. If there's success in one area, we might want to interrogate that further to see if we can replicate from the data in another area. Our student and staff well-being, that was mentioned earlier as well, is something that we continue to take very seriously. We are very lucky that all of the sites have a wellness center. But in addition to the wellness center for the students, we also are concerned with the staff. We've done, been doing things related to wellness for the staff as well as the students. And in particular, we have just recently started working on EBP II, which is a welcoming and inclusive environment. So we had kind of a soft launch to that with looking at using our data protocol to look at some panorama data, which can be very revealing and can make us curious about what it is that is affecting students in a way that's either positive or in a way that's an area of growth for us. And in particular, students are much more dialed in to their own well-being since the pandemic. And so we want to make sure that we are encouraging support for that and that we are continuing to give them opportunities so that they can feel as if Almonte High School is supportive, both for the students and for the staff. And so we always want to come back to our framing of the lesson because this is kind of the two parts of the sandwich, the bread on either side. We want to make sure that if we said that we were going to talk about content and language objectives, that we do talk about it, but then we want to check for understanding. We want to make sure and do a quick assessment of our audience to make sure that we've been able to come up with at least one thing that is an area in which we had, we have progressed since our last board report. So what I would invite you to do right now is turn to a partner, turn to a partner, our board members, our board members. Our board members, anyone up front? So our task was to connect ways in which Almonte High School continues to work collaboratively to develop data-informed, student-centered instructional practices. That was our task. And hopefully, in ours, we had limited time, but we do want you to talk a little bit. If we want you to hear, we talk. If we want to make sure that others have learned, we ask them to talk. So with a partner or a very small group, discuss one area. It could be SEL. It could be how we are using data. It could be how we are dealing with content and language objectives or working with our ELD students. It could be how we're focusing on academic discussions, classroom walkthroughs, or our collaboration and collective efficacy. I would like to give you about one minute or so to discuss with your partner. And we will hear potentially from somebody. You have about a minute. We have a good, got a good little group going on over here.
One way.
We have about 30 more seconds. Let's make sure that all four, at least half of your group has had a chance to share.
No.
What did you, what did you notice?
That's not a strategy. Yeah, you, that's a habit strategy.
Whether it's an habit strategy or...
But that's about time.
I like the fact that I'm working in the power zone.
Of course.
You know, the fundamental five.
I'm not an area teacher.
All right. So if I can get everybody's attention back, it's nice that you're having a good conversation. Thank you, President Breonius. So I would like to, I have already had a volunteer, but I don't always necessarily want to go with my first volunteer. I would like to call on somebody. So as a former Almonte High School student, I have a couple choices. Dr. Guzman, would you either... Dr. Guzman, would you either, and this is where I can give it a twist, would you either like to share or call on somebody to share? It gives a chance to get off the hook if necessary.
I would like to call on someone.
There you go.
Sorry, I wasn't paying attention.
Say that one more time?
I said I wasn't paying attention, so I'm going to call on someone.
Not a problem. Ms. Torres did say that she would volunteer, and so I said, "Maybe you'll get a chance to talk, but if, if you would want to call on her, that'd be perfectly fine."
I actually want to call on Dr. Lynn.
There you go. Same group. So all we need to hear is a little bit about what you talked about. What was one area in which we talked about or you noticed some progression of instructional practices at Elmani High School?
So I had the privilege of teaming up with Dr. Rivas, who's a, you know, educational expert. And she mentioned instructional rounds as being one of those tools that are quite effective. There, we were talking about, yesterday actually, Fernando Ledesma, how to use qualitative data captured from those visits and how to quantify that into data.
Thank you. And that's it. So what we did is we went a little bit through the fundamental five by walking around, making sure that everybody knows what they're supposed to be doing, recognizing and reinforcing, being just in students' presence. Things change automatically as soon as we step up. Hey, how's it going? So not only that, we framed our lesson. We also had small group discussion. And that's what we tried to replicate in classroom after classroom, period after period at Elmani High School on a daily basis. I will now pass it over to another key part, Ms. Naricho.
Good evening. My name is Naricho. I'm the English learner Tosa at Elmani High School. I am finishing up my 25th year at Elmani High School, so it's a real privilege for me to speak about the school that I love so much. I'm, wrong way. I'm here tonight to celebrate our English learner and multilingual lions and, and give you a little glimpse into the work and the, and the achievements that we are celebrating this particular school year. I start this question, I pose this question to our staff every year in the fall. What do we believe about our English learners? Through which lens do we perceive them? I challenge teachers to really examine the lens through which they are planning instruction, interacting with our students. And it is easy to say in, in, in lip service that we look at our English learners through an asset-based lens. It is much harder to put that lens into practice and to really, really consider and to really view our students through that lens. So part of this presentation really is to challenge our, our staff and to show, you know, our district, what does it mean to look at our English learners, our multilingual students through an asset-based lens. A little bit of context for, for this presentation, who are our English learners? The English learners make up about a quarter of our total student population. We started the fall with roughly 300 English learners. Of those English learners, about 28% are newcomers, so we classify newcomers as students that have been in the United States for less than, five years or less. Long-term English learners are students that have been classified as English learners for six years or more. Of our long-term English learners, a vast majority of them were actually born in the United States. So they are, they are students that have been here their whole lives, but they are classified as English learners because their home languages are a language other than English. So these are bilingual students. I'd like to speak a little bit about our newcomers. We have seen a huge shift in the population that we are welcoming into our schools as newcomers. Right now, the dominant group that we are getting are from Central America. Of the, the countries that are predominantly making, the makeup of that group are Guatemalans, Salvadorians, and Hondurans. So those are our English learners now. That has been a real amazing addition to the fabric of our newcomer community. And it has stretched us, to be honest. A lot of our Central Americans do not have their native language as Spanish. Spanish is their language of school, but most of them are coming in with native dialects as their home language. So it has been a real, a really neat thing to see the mixing of our cultures, to see that our, our, our English learners are not a monolith, that they come with very distinctive needs, with very distinctive cultures, traditions. And it's been really, really a challenge, but also such a blessing for us as a school community to embrace those, those, those different cultures that have made our, our campus and our school population a much richer community. Some data celebrations, we had, we had many data celebrations this year, but these are the two I'd like to highlight. We are slowly but surely increasing our reclassification rates. What the bar graph does not show is that that growth is really the compilation of so many collaborative efforts, efforts of the students themselves, of instruction happening by teachers, of parents encouraging their students. And really, we like to see that more and more of our students are reclassifying. And so that's been a really, really point of data growth that we're very proud of. We are also proud that we have a very large population every single year of seniors that graduate with the California State Seal of Bilinguacy. The, the criteria to achieve that state seal is very rigorous. It is not an easy achievement. So the fact that we have so many students meeting those multiple requirements, they have to show fluency in both English and in another language. It's, it's really a testament to the hard work of the students, to our amazing World Language Department, and to families, really parents who are encouraging and really protecting those students' home languages as well. And so we're, these are two just data pieces that we're very, very proud of. Part of our efforts in supporting our English learners this year is really trying to individualize our support. Like I said before, our English learners are not a monolith. There is not one silver bullet strategy that, that works for every student. Students are still classified as English learners for different reasons. So we have really, really made a concerted effort to have more of those one-on-one meetings as much as we can. This year, we had the great fortune of having an EL counselor assigned to our school. And that, that has been a huge game changer for how we've been able to support our English learners. It's Liliana Alarcon, she's here. She is, yes. So she is loved by our guidance department. So she has worked in collaboration in tandem with our really, really amazing counseling team. And she has had really such an impact on the students. I do want to highlight, I have a, I have a huge laundry list of things that she has done, but I do want to highlight one specific area that we were really in need of. A lot of our newcomers, particularly from Central America, are coming in with a lot of trauma. And in the past, we have done both trauma and learning gaps. A lot of them are coming from histories of interrupted education. So it has been really challenging to try and support them in the many ways that they need support. One area, we were focusing a lot on making sure that for their academics, that they were appropriately placed, that they were getting the academic support they needed to be successful here in, in our school. Where we really needed to bulk up our support was in the social and emotional support for these students. For them to come in, if you, if you have time to sit down and talk to any of our newcomers and the journeys that they have endured to come to the United States, it is, it's, it's both heartbreaking and also really inspiring. And so it's been really neat that we have had time and the space for, and Liliana has been, our EL counselor has been the one that's really spearheaded these efforts to really meet with these students and connect them to mental health services, to make them feel seen. Newcomers tend to be sort of these invisible silent entities on campus, but not, not, not at Elmani. They are magnified, they are connected, they are, relationships are fostered. And so that is something that we're really proud of. We brought back an old program from my early teaching days at Elmani called the ROAR program. And really what this program is, is to acknowledge the little wins. So these are for the students, they, they might not get honor roll, they might not get the perfect attendance award, but you know what? They brought up their Ds to Cs. And they came to school when they were not coming last semester, they're coming now. So we're really trying to target students that, you know what, we still have many, we have a lot of growth for where we want them to be, but we want to honor and recognize the little wins that they do, the improvements, the small movement forward. And, and part of that has also been contacting parents. And some of these parents that we call have never had a phone call from the school. That's been positive. So it's oftentimes this very awkward conversation of, oh, what, what did they do again? You know, what, what happened again? And no, we just want to congratulate you. You know, they, the student, you know, their GPA is growing, they are doing better in their classes. And so it's been, it's been really gratifying. Sometimes when Liliana and I are feeling down and we're getting discouraged by a lot of things, we're like, let's make it a ROAR day, you know? Let's, let's just focus on those, those little wins. Let's get those kids in, give them their certificate, call the parents. And it's a big pick-me-up for, for, to really just intentionally be looking for the growth of the students. So that's been something that we are very proud of as well. Our long-term English learners, again, these are English learners that are, have been classified for six years or more as English learners. This year, we, we started a new designated ELD elective class called College and Career Prep. What's, what's great about this class is it, it is a G-approved class. So students that are in this intervention course also are getting college credit or college completion credit for it. So, and this really targets our most struggling LTls. And we have two incredible teachers that are teaching this course. These students have shown a lot of progress, not only in the class that they are taking, but also in their other content classes as well. We have also worked really hard to provide time for teachers to collaborate. We have a really, really strong collaboration team between our college career prep teachers and also our ELD teachers. And so really, having that, having that space to share best practices has been a real benefit to the instruction of all of our teachers that work most closely with our English learners. We just started this week, actually, a boot camp for our ELs. We recognize that our English learner data in, on the casp is the area that we need to focus on the most. And so our, it was actually teacher-driven. The teacher said, "We want to work with these students, we want to encourage them, we want to commit to their growth." And so they, they started this boot camp for, for our English learner 11th graders. We also got to visit a couple colleges this year. And so that was, that was really fun. It was really neat to get the LTls out of campus and to really get to know them outside of campus and really to expand their, you know, their, their visions of where they want to be so that they could go visualize where they want to move on to after, after high school. Okay, going back to our newcomers, we, we do cultural celebrations with them throughout the year. Our most recent one was a gingerbread decorating activity, a lot of fun. But I do want to speak right now about our Madres luncheons. I have my moms here. Yay! So. Last year, most of, most of our moms come, they are also on our ELAC committee. And last year, we were discussing our newcomers and we shared that a lot of our newcomers are here unaccompanied and that they are here by themselves, they do not have their parents with them. And so the moms were like, you could see, you could see their faces. They were like, what, what can we do? Bring them to us. Bring these, bring these children to us. And they, starting last year, they, they, they said, "We, we will cook for them, we will love them, we will connect with them." So this became kind of a tradition. This year, we invited not just our unaccompanied minors, but we also invited all newcomers that have been here less than a year. And we expanded the celebration. And so it's just this kind of grassroots support system that was completely the, you know, out of the hearts of our, our parents. And so it's been a really, just a great way to connect our newcomers with our families. Some have exchanged phone numbers, you know, some have exchanged information. So to make those connections has been something that's been really fun for me to witness. And then lastly, we, Mr. Maher spoke about our designated ELD curriculum that we do every, every day during second period. We have a protected time that we do what-do-you-think units. And in December, our district board passed a resolution affirming and protecting the rights of our immigrant students and families. Thank you for that resolution. That was a big green light for us to come back in January and make sure that our students knew about that resolution, make, make sure that they had an opportunity to learn about the constitutional rights that they are entitled to. And so we were able to use our designated ELD curriculum to embed this topic. And it was just a really concrete way that we could ensure that our students were informed, that they were educated, they were equipped with the materials, the know your rights cards that they could take back to their friends and families. And so I do, I do want to just end with this. You know, we, as you have seen tonight, we have encouraged our, our students to find their ROAR. But we also know that students cannot find their ROAR unless they feel safe and valued and welcome. And so this was a, born out of a very, you know, unfortunate situation. This was an opportunity for us to be very explicit and very vocal about how this district, how our school feels about our immigrant students and their families. And so, yeah, that's, thank you for the resolution and thank you for supporting, us supporting our students.
So that concludes our board presentation. We hope that you found your ROAR at Elmani High School. With that, Mr. Doc, I mean, Mr. Breonius, open it up for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cuevas. Thank you to everybody here tonight. I don't want to miss anyone, so I'm not going to call anybody by name, but every single individual that is here tonight, every, every single student and faculty member who presented or was part of the instructional presentation, thank you so much for sharing your time with us today. So at this time, I'm going to open it up for any comments or questions. I will start with my colleague on the far left, Mr. Nguyen.
Thank you, thank you very much for a very, very impressive presentation. And the presence of the parents and the student and the teacher behind you speak volume of your leadership team. And, you know, you know, I've been on the board less than three years, but I see the big, biggest growth from Elmani High School. And I'm so pleased and so happy and so excited what you have in store for the future for our student. And, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm very moved, but, you know, and I see all the progress you make. Sometime you temporarily unseat one of the, you know, a royal high school, and I say, wow! Then, you know, that, that's a rising, you, you are the rising star. And I have no doubt that you will reach the highest level of success. And thank you, you know, you all for make a very, you know, spectacular, impressive presentation to the board, and I really appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen. Moving on to my far right, Mr. Padilla.
Absolutely. Just very impressive. I've, I've always been impressed with the leadership of Mr. Cuevas. I don't know if you know this, but Mr. Cuevas is the first Latino principal in the history of El Monte High School. And that is very powerful because the majority of And that is very powerful because the majority of the students at that school are Latino. We do have about 23%, 24% Asian, but I think it's important for students to see somebody in that position, either as a principal or a leader at a very high level, because it sends a message, even without talking about it, that I too can become the principal or achieve at a very high level. Thank you so much to all of your teachers. Your teachers have definitely come along for the ride. I want to publicly just thank all of the teachers for their hard work. At El Monte High School, you truly show 21st century skills. You're showing the collaboration tonight, the communication, not only amongst yourselves, but also with the students, the creativity and the critical thinking. All those 21st century skills are all embedded in the work that you're doing. And you're right, this is not, you didn't hop on a new program, you're just continuing on the work that you had left off on. How do I know that? Because I've been here for 10 years and I've seen that presentation years ago. So thank you for applying English language learner strategies, because English language learner strategies or multilingual strategies also help our students that are not English language learners, regular students. Also, thank you for addressing our long-term English language learners' needs. Many of the LTls were kids that were born here but are still struggling with the language. And again, many of our kids know the bits, the basic interpersonal communication skills. And sometimes we make the mistake that if somebody can speak very well and get along with others and talk to their friends, is the same thing as having the cognitive language that they need to succeed in college, and it's not. So thank you to El Monte High School teachers for making sure that you allow our students to speak and to model for them what, you know, college language looks like so that they can achieve at a very high level. Thank you for using the PSYOP model. We know that it works, you have not left it. Thank you for paying attention to the lessons that you are creating to make sure that, yes, you use the PLC, professional learning communities, and you ask those four questions of, you know, are my students learning? And if they're not, what are you going to do about it? This is one of the best presentations I have seen in a very long time, and I want to thank... I want to thank you for the work that you do. And you know what's rewarding is that when you are working so hard and then the results show it, thank you for growing. Like Mr. Qui said, we know that your math test scores grew, even to the point of some of our other high schools that, you know, traditionally have always made gains. But English language learner growth of 16%, 16 points, great job. Math, nine, awesome. And that you reclassified 56 students as an English language learner, that is data that speaks to me. I was not born in this country, I don't think I ever got reclassified because I still can't speak English clearly, but that makes me very happy that those 56 students have a fighting chance of succeeding and reaching the American dream and moving on to college. And I know that we've had students at your school specifically that have been English language learners, that have gotten full-rite scholarships to many universities back east.
Georgetown.
Georgetown, I remember that. And I also like the fact that you celebrate, you have little celebrations. I'll never forget when you guys were giving out the gifts to kids. And at El Monte High School, I know one of the counselors was here in the mental health room, and the kid said, "But miss, why are you giving me that prize? Like, I'm still like coming late." And the response was, "Yes, but you're improving. You're not coming late five days out of the week, you're down to two." So kids need to see some of that recognition, and then you'll bring them along for the ride, and they'll want to work for you. But lastly, thank you for building those positive relationships, teachers, because we know through research that kids do not want to learn from teachers they hate or teachers they can't stand, or teachers where the student feels like, "That teacher doesn't like me." And if you're working really hard on building those relationships, I know that those students will come and learn, and your growth is going to go off the charts. And Liliana, thank you so much for the work that you've been doing. Yes. Liliana is an amazing, comes from an amazing family. She's one of my former students that knew Lexington School back when I was young, and she's a hard-working lady, the entire family is. But the fact that you're working with our English language learner population or our multilingual learners is big, because you know what that's about. We come from homes where our primary language is not English. And just, I cannot say enough about your program. This program or this presentation tonight hit it out of the ballpark. Thank you for your leadership, Mr. Kovey, Ms. McCarty. I'm not going to mention everybody by name, but you know where you are, everybody at that site over here, and your teachers, I am extremely proud. Tonight, I'm beaming with joy. And las madres, a ver si un dia me invitan allá a la comida que hacen. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Trustee, Dr. Guzman.
Yeah, I mean, wow. It's really all I could say is, wow. Like Mr. Padilla, Mr. Qui before me, I am just beyond impressed. And not just because I'm an Almani High School alum, but really the hard work, the collaboration. And it's not a, it's a very participatory collaborative approach, everybody working together. And I think somebody, I think, Nadia, you said it earlier, or somebody said it earlier, the students are really seen. Not just the students, but it's clear the parents are seen, the families are seen, teachers are seen. And when that happens, learning can take place. Without that safety that you have all put at Almani High School, no matter how impressive of a program we have, learning is not going to happen. So, Mr. Cuevas, to your leadership and to everybody here, I just want to thank from the bottom of my heart, just because I see clearly the dedication, the commitment to these students. And Mr. Padilla said it best, it really is the rising star. I think Mr. Qui, Almani High School with this presentation, it really is a model for what we should all be doing across the district. So, Mr. Cuevas, I don't have any questions, I just want to commend again, and the parents, thank you so much for supporting our unaccompanied minors. I worked for the county a couple years ago when we had an influx of unaccompanied minors, and I had a work, I got the opportunity to work with them at the Pomona Fairplex. And to hear some of those stories of trauma are really heartbreaking. And to know that some of them are as young as eight, 10, 12, coming over, and for the parents, the moms, but also the entire Almani High School community coming together to support those students so they can then feel safe and learn, it's really, really powerful. And it's going to leave an impression on me for a very long time. So thank you to the parents, thank you to everybody that's been here. And Mr. Cuevas, again, thank you for your leadership and this great presentation.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Guzman. Trustee, Dr. Galavies.
Voy a empezar con el programa de las madres porque muchas gracias. Estoy muy contenta con todo lo que están haciendo por nuestros estudiantes porque sin los padres, los estudiantes sin su apoyo no pueden lograr lo que están logrando. So muchas gracias, señores. EL students are near and dear to me. One, because you just heard me, I learned English when I was five years old, when I started kindergarten here in one of our Almani schools. I went to Frank Wright. So people kind of look at me and they assume that I don't speak Spanish, but it was actually my first language. With that, I do a lot of work with ELs in my professional life. So I'm, thank you to the leadership, of course, and thank you to the teachers as well, but I want to highlight some of the things that I saw that's amazing. So you showed us the data over the five years in the speaking portion, and the students that we moved over from the 32%, or that you moved over from the 32%, taking it all the way down to 15%, that's 17% growth in the speaking section of the LPAC. We also have to remember that our students who are ELs, they continue to be monitored after they've been reclassified. So oftentimes, we think like, okay, they've been reclassified, it's over there. Nope, that's not the case. There's two monitoring tools that get used. So the fact that we were able, that you guys were able to bring them down and have that 17% change is amazing. Another thing that I want to highlight is that the LPAC gets harder as you get older, and then LTls traditionally have a harder time reclassifying. So the fact that there's growth in your reclassification rates over four years by 10%, also phenomenal. Like, kudos to all the work you're doing there. Another thing that Mr. Padilla said that's very, very true is that the strategies that you use for English learners are essential for all learners. So that's really great work. There's just so many good things happening. And then I think another piece that was really refreshing with your presentation tonight was that it focused on ELs. We hear a lot about math, so it was really nice to hear about something different and something that addresses so many of our students in our community. So just thank you to our leadership here at Almani, you guys are doing amazing things. Thank you to the teachers for buying in. I think that's really important, right? You can see that there's unity and that you guys are moving in the right direction. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Galavies.
Thank you, Dr. Galavies. I'll move on to our student trust team, Ms. Pablo.
Good evening. Thank you for the presentation, sorry. Thank you for the presentation, it was honestly amazing. Again, I think that's one part that I really like about having this position, just seeing students come and go, especially during these presentations. Like, it does get a bit sad when it's only adults in here, and it's like, where are the students? But just to echo what Ms. Galavies said, I think that I really liked the part where you guys involved the EL students. I think for me, it's also a very sensitive and near and dear topic. And thank you to Ms. Liliana, the parents, and everyone that's making them feel supported and welcome here at Almani High School. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pablo. I'll wrap up the conversation, just thank you again. Just to let everyone know, we, Mr. Nguyen and myself, we had kind of a sneak preview of this presentation at our site visit last week. Mr. Cuevas shared a little bit of the framework of the presentation, and we had a kind of a, throughout the visit, because we were there for about two and a half, three hours, a prolonged discussion about what was going on at Almani High School, what the presentation would focus on. And we talked about the SMART strategies, the previously the PSYOP strategies as well. I really can't say anything more that hasn't already been said, other than I'm really proud of the work that is going on at Almani High School, from the administration, from the faculty and staff, and the support that's provided to our students, to our parent involvement. It's amazing, and it really does take a community to ensure that our students are successful. And, you know, I do want to echo one thing, the commitment, the buy-in from the faculty, that means so much. Because when you're asking a large group of individuals with numerous personalities, sometimes maybe different priorities or different ideas of their own, when you ask them to commit to the strategy and to just try it out, it means a lot. And let me tell you, when I was on your campus last week, I was telling Dr. Guzman when we had our quick discussion during Mr. Maher's presentation, I said, "What we focused on here, this is what I saw on my site visit. This is what I've seen at Almani High School. This isn't just a show. This is literally reflective of every single day of what takes place in the classrooms and the offices on that campus at Almani High School." I do appreciate the presentation today. I will say, you're probably going to get some looks from folks because you set the bar really high today, and this is, I think, what we expect from everybody. I do appreciate the amount of work and the commitment that went into presenting to the board tonight. So thank you so much. I will end it with this, and I always ask when we have instructional presentations, what can we do to support you, to better support you as a school? You may not have the question right now, you may not have the answer. If you do, great, otherwise, you know, please reach out to us, either through Dr. Zuniga or as individual board members. What more can we do to support you and your students?
I can ask now, and I want to ask publicly, please support the programs that we have at Almani High School to continue to support our English language learners. That's critical. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cuevas. Thank you again, Almani High School audience, for being here tonight. Gracias, hola, damas, y mis amigos, muchas gracias esta noche. You're welcome to stay. We have a very short agenda, however, you know, you are free to go at this time as well.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Good night, everyone, but you are welcome to stay, you don't have to, but we do have the remainder of the meeting. So, moving on to our agenda, our consent agenda, are there any items, there's only three items, but are there any items that a member would like to pull for discussion? Mr. Nguyen?
None.
None. Mr. Padilla?
No.
Dr. Galavies?
None.
Dr. Guzman?
No.
And I have none. Okay, seeing that there are no items that need to be pulled for discussion, is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
I move to approve.
I move to approve.
Consent agenda?
Moved by trustee Padilla, is there a second?
I second.
Seconded by trustee Dr. Galavies. Any discussion?
No.
Seeing none, all who's in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, consent agenda is approved. Moving on to the regular agenda. Item number one, consider approval of ratification to the Almani Union Educators Association, or EMUEA, unit agreement with the Almani Union High School District. Is there a motion to approve this item?
I motion.
Moved by Dr. Guzman, is there a second?
I second.
Seconded by trustee Nguyen, any discussion? Seeing none, all who's in favor of approving item number one, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, item number one is approved. Item number two, consider approval of ratification to the Almani Union Educators Association Adult Education, or EMUEA unit agreement with the Almani Union High School District. Is there a motion to approve this item?
I motion.
Move to approve.
Moved by trustee Nguyen, is there a second?
I second.
Seconded by trustee Dr. Guzman. Any discussion? Seeing none, all who's in favor of approving item number two, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, item number two is approved. Item number three, consider approval of a Me Too Memorandum of Unstranding, or MOU, for the Chapter 11 Classified School Employees Association unit agreement with the Almani Union High School District. Is there a motion to approve this item?
I'm sorry, I move to approve.
Moved by trustee Padilla, is there a second?
I second.
Seconded by trustee Dr. Guzman, any discussion? Seeing none, all who's in favor of approving item number three, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, item number three is approved. Item number four, review, discuss, and revise Board Bylaw and Exhibit 9270, Conflict of Interest, first reading. Any questions or discussion on this item?
None.
I have none.
None.
Okay, so Dr. Zuniga will bring this back for a second reading and adoption. All right, that concludes our regular agenda tonight. Moving on to roundtable and closure of meeting. Item number one, topics or issues to be brought forward for future agenda items. Mr. Nguyen, trustee Nguyen?
No, I have none.
No items. Trustee Padilla?
Yes, I would like to bring back the topic of, you know, Dr. Lynn brought the presentation of the 78 reduction in 78 FTEs for the 2025-2026. I would like a presentation on that in terms of what are we doing to find some dollars or some money so that we can minimize the reduction in FTEs? I know that, you know, they're working really hard on that by looking at the, you know, like the $12 million that we have in the Learning Recovery Emergency Block Grant, and then also in the $5 million that we have in the Arts Music Instructional Material Block Grant. So I would like a presentation on that so that we can have, continue to have a discussion on that and what we're doing. Because I know that, I know we talked about we don't want to create fear, and that's not definitely what I want to do, but I do want people to be informed and for us to lay out our plan, and if I can get consensus from the board to bring that for a presentation.
Do you have a presentation on potential layoffs?
Yeah, potential layoffs, specifically centering around the major assumptions used in the budget that got created. And I know that we have a positive certification, and we're fiscally solvent because we can pay our bills for this year and two subsequent years. But I want to keep this discussion in the forefront, because to me, the thing that I left with in this presentation is that a reduction of 78, you know, full-time equivalent presentations, I mean, positions in 2025-2026, and then a reduction of 12 more for the 2026-2022. And like, for example, today, we heard this wonderful presentation, and, you know, you did pose the question, and I always like it when you pose the question of like, what can we do to help you? And one of the things that Mr. Cuevas said is, please protect our English language learners and the people that are doing that work. So I just want to keep talking about this topic. And again, not to create fear, but for us to show and be transparent of what is the plan that we have in place and what are we doing? Where, what stone are we turning? We're going to leave no stone unturned to try to find those dollars, even despite all of the, you know, uncertainty that we have right now, particularly with our funds that are coming from the federal government. I would like that, Mr. Bionis.
Anyone object to a presentation on that? No? No? Okay, I'll work with staff to bring that forward.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Any other items?
No more items, that is all.
Dr. Galavies?
Yes, I have some.
Yes, I have something tonight. I would like a presentation on our CTE programs. And I know that on the website, it tells us what we offer and where, but I want a little bit more than that. So I'd like a presentation on the CTE programs, how many of the pathways, our three-year pathways versus two-year pathways, and then what's the success rate in our three-year pathways? And if we have two-year pathways, are they more successful than our three-year pathways? So really focusing on completion and how that affects our CCI.
What's a CCI? So folks who don't know acronyms?
Our Career in College Indicator. It's kind of like the report card that they're using now to rate us. So in visiting some of the campuses, I was able to go into CTE classrooms, and I know that there's a big push across the state for CTE, and I know that there's a lot of grants and funding out there for it. So I just kind of want to know what we're doing, and then how, if we have pathways that are maybe perhaps a little bit outdated, if they're focusing on programs that we're no longer using, like JavaScript doesn't really get used that much anymore in like real life. So I just want like an in-depth presentation on what our CTE pathways look like and how successful they are, and how many completers are coming out of them.
Okeydoke. Is there any objection to that presentation? Anyone?
Nope.
Okay, I'll work with Dr. Zuniga and staff on that. Any other items? Dr. Galavies?
No, thank you.
Dr. Guzman?
I have one unique item, and then I do want to echo support for both the CTE programs, the overview and in-depth. I want to make sure that we're continually adding new CTE programs that are going to prepare our students for the future. One of them, to me, is psychology and mental health. So I just want to get a good sense of what are we doing to ensure that we're continually refreshing and meeting what the students are needing or wanting from CTE programs. And so, but I specifically want to request, and I mentioned it last time, but for this next meeting, the mental health presentation, including what are we doing for violence prevention, what are we doing on grief and loss, trauma. Yes, I know we have contracts with our community-based mental health providers, but that is not enough for what we're experiencing and our students are experiencing. And so I really want to make sure that we're covering our bases. So I do want to have a full-on presentation on, you know, the comprehensive, what I would call mental well-being plan of the district, whether it's mental health, social, emotional, and all these other programs that contribute to the, to the well-being and social, emotional health of our students.
Got it. Does anybody object to the presentation on the comprehensive mental well-being of our students?
No.
No? Okay, I'll work with staff on getting those presentations set up. Is that it? Dr. Guzman?
Yes.
Thank you. I don't have any items tonight. Dr. Zuniga, do you have any items?
No items.
No items? Wonderful. All right. So moving right along to item number two, closed session. The board will recon, will not reconvene into closed session to address any further items. At this time, we want item number three, report out from closed session. Mr. Legal Counsel, if you wouldn't mind reporting out.
Mr. President, with reference to the public agenda, Section A2, subsections A, B, C, and D, all of them, the board received information. No final action was taken, and that concludes the readout from closed session.
Thank you, Legal Counsel. At this time, just want to remind everybody that we do have a meeting on Monday, March 24th, at 5:30 PM for our ethics training. So I look forward to seeing everyone on Monday. Without any objection, it is 8:24, and we are adjourned.